They are.
Okay, stand by please. Five, four, three.
Thank you. I'm Dylan Pierce McCoy, an education reporter with Chalkbeat Indiana. Thank you for joining us this evening. Welcome to another event in a series of occasional conversations about education. Chalkbeat Indiana is hosting tonight's forum in partnership with WFYI, the Indianapolis Library, and The Recorder. This November is an important election for Indianapolis Public Schools. The district is asking voters for more money through two tax measures, and eight candidates are vying for three seats on the school board. Tonight, we are here to learn more about the candidates for office. We are dividing the forum into two sections with a short break in between. We will begin with candidates for at-large representing the entire district. We will meet candidates for seats representing districts three and five after the break. If you have questions for the candidates, please write them on index cards, raise your hand, and we'll bring you a card or collect your completed card. And for those watching at home, you can tweet questions using the hashtag @IPSform. For the first panel, we'll take questions until 5:45. Our discussion will end at 6:15. And can we just begin with you guys briefly introducing yourselves and sharing a little bit about your background and experience and why you're running for a seat on the board? If you could start, Susan, and then work our way down, and then I'll do each question with a new person starting.
Hello and good evening. My name is Susan Collins. I was a high school teacher in IPS for 12 years, a literacy coach in IPS for five years, and then retired in 2012. At that time, I went to Warren and taught high school English for a year, and currently I am a tutor and coordinator of a tutoring program for children in foster care. Before I taught high school, I taught elementary school for 10 years and preschool for 10 years before that. And while the time I was teaching high school English, I also taught adult ESL at George Washington High School Night School. The reason I'm running for, as a candidate for IPS School Board, is that I feel that there should be more community input. I feel that I have a voice, have experience. I am committed to this community, and I would love to be that voice on the board.
My name is Joanna Elizabeth Krummel. I'm a parent of a senior at Arsenal Tech High School. I'm a teaching artist, small business owner of a ceramics studio in Fountain Square, and run art programs in various schools, including some of the CFIs, and I've done some work through AYS at 106 and 43. I've served as the CFI basketball coach. I was the leader of one of the African-American Studies Clubs at CFI II, served as the president of the Harshman PTSA for two years, and the vice president for my son's ninth grade year to help with their transition over. I've volunteered with Reed to achieve tutoring students at Arsenal Tech that were at risk of not graduating because they couldn't pass their core exams. I am a committed IPS parent. I took a risk of putting my son in when IPS was really up on the rise with the magnet programs were really starting to flourish, and he's really benefited from his public school education at IPS, and I want other students to be able to have that same opportunity. I've seen the district digress, especially in the last four years that he's been in high school, and I want to see us move forward maintaining our current high schools at a strong level and making sure that our elementary programs are strong for our kids to get a good foundation and encouraging them to stay in IPS once they go to high school.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Sullivan, and I'm a lifelong Indianapolis resident raised on the east side. I have three children who all attended IPS schools. I currently have grandchildren in IPS, and I'm also the proud parent of an IPS veteran teacher. I have worked in and around the field of public education for over 30 years, and realize one of the things I forget to mention is I also was head of our parent organization when my kids were little, so have done that work. I ran for this office because I really believe that Indianapolis is uniquely positioned to have the best public school system in the United States, and I think that the changes that we've put in place are going to get us there. I think they're the right strategy. I think that we need to stay the course and take the time to let these innovations take root. I believe you don't go forward by going back, and I'm all about moving forward, so thank you.
The district is asking voters for $272 million in additional funding for schools with two referendums this fall. One would fund building improvements, the other would go to operating expenses. Do you support those referendums, and what is your reasoning? Do you think they'll pass, and why and why not? If you could begin, Jody.
The reality of our educational system, especially in the state of Indiana, is that we are probably not getting enough funding to run our school systems the way that they need be. So this is a very mixed question for me, because I realize that since we are getting cuts in federal and state funding, it has to come from somewhere. We have property tax cuts, caps, that are, you know, not allowing us to get the funds that we need. My problem with the referendum is that it's in a midterm election cycle. I would have liked to seen it put on in a presidential election where we'd have more of a Democratic view, voice of all of the taxpayers in Marion County that are going to be affected by this. I know they tried to put it on the primary, which I think is disingenuous when we're dealing with a board in a district that is having a hard time with transparency with their financials. So I know that we need more money in our school system, and I know that this is probably one of the few ways that we can get it. Do I think it's going to pass? I am afraid that the way that our board has been handling their financials and transparency, that there's a big mistrust from taxpayers, and I can see that being an issue, and it's not going to pass because of that. I hope it does, because I think we do need to use the funds, and then I hope to be on the board and be a part of a new board that will provide 100% transparency in how we are utilizing our funds to better benefit our students.
Yes, clearly, I support both of the referendum questions, having voted on those as a board member, and also having significant debate and understanding of the issues involved in that. I can reassure voters that the operating funds are intended to be able to support our teachers. That's the most important part of what we do, and in order to maintain the quality of our staff, we need to be competitive. We need to be able to attract and retain the best and brightest teachers. So that's what the investment is in. Yes, the cuts that we've experienced through property tax caps and through the cuts at the state funding have impacted us dramatically, but we are also, we know we need to invest in order to get the kinds of results that we want. So yes, I support. In terms of the capital, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. We have a lot of old buildings. This money is not going to that, so that's still out there. And old buildings don't get better by themselves. So we need this money. It's essential to ensure safety of our students, but don't be surprised if we do need to look at additional funding on capital at some point.
Susan?
I have strong reservations about both of the referenda that are on this ballot. The first one for $52 million, I feel like that the school board was not completely transparent. I question who did the estimate of, was it a union organization or contractor that had no ties to the school board? I wonder also, because I was one of the petitioners for the 2008 referendum, and I walked many of the neighborhoods getting signatures, we're still paying on that debt load, and I know that those buildings were renovated, and now some of them are not even part of IPS schools. As for the operating referendum, I have been told that 20% of that will go to teacher salaries for those who are protected by union representation, but none of the teachers in innovation schools have that protection. So my question is, where is this 20% going, really?
I'm sorry, when you say you've been told that 20% would go to teacher raises, what's the source for that? It's not something I've heard.
That was from the superintendent during one of the talks.
Okay. What I've been told by the school administration when I have asked this question directly is that all of the money will go to teacher pay raises. Some of that is past raises that teachers have gotten and current teacher salaries, but some of that is new raises. The way that funding for innovation schools works varies widely by school. Some of them are funded through a pretty similar mechanism as traditional schools. Obviously, the district cannot determine how much teachers at those schools are paid because they don't work directly for the district, and you're right, and they're not part of the union.
Yes, and the point I was making was that those teachers are not under union protection. And when I was told during one of the meetings that was where the referendum was discussed, I personally asked the superintendent where that 20, how much would be going to the teachers, and who would be the ones getting the raise. And he said that it would be those protected by union protections. So if we continue to make innovation schools as non-union protected teachers, then, okay, so who's getting the raise? And so it will be less, fewer and fewer teachers. So moving on, I just want to, I have been to multiple of the presentations by the school board, and I still have reservations.
Thank you. To continue with finance, the district has touted its increasing financial transparency. There are quarterly finance reports posted on the website. Do you feel that community members can make sense of the information and find answers to their questions? And are there steps the district could take to make that information more accessible to the community more broadly? And I'm going to start with you, Mary Ann.
Okay. I think yes and yes, because no matter how well you're doing, you can always do better. And I'd be very, very supportive of creating more user-friendly systems for school data, not just for IPS, but for authorizers, charter authorizers, for the state of Indiana. So I know it's difficult because information is often kept in a lot of different places, but it is publicly available. Do I want to spend a lot of our staff time working on that particular task right now? Probably not, because I feel like our folks are working really, really hard under the current situation, and we need to do better with getting things out in user-friendly ways, but it is there and it is transparent. I've also been assured by many, many people that the district is actually at whole new levels of transparency. So simply saying over and over again that the district lacks transparency without providing evidence of that is something that I would push back on. I've heard it from the business community. They've never seen this kind of transparency. I've heard it just this weekend, I think there was a letter to the editor from someone who works on our finance committee. So the people who are engaged and who come to the finance committee meetings, I think they're very well informed, but the information is there, and it is public information, all of it.
Susan?
I think that the school board needs to be more transparent before they make the decisions that affect all of the people and all the children in Indianapolis. The innovation schools should be proven programs, and those need to be brought to the community to be discussed beforehand, which I believe to a certain degree they are. I would like to see, just to say that something is transparent because it's posted online is not really transparent to everyone. And I know that between the Chamber of Commerce and the school board, there has been touted great transparency. But for the majority of people in Indianapolis, this whole referendum, the innovation schools, the changes within the system have not been transparent to assuage everyone's fears of severe change. That sort of destabilizes this community.
If you go to the IPS website, everything is there. It's really hard to navigate. And I spent 30 minutes trying to find some information, and then I still really couldn't find exactly who I was looking for, so I emailed the administration and got what I was asking for a few days later. That's not easy access, and that's not transparency. A parent who is considered engaged in our school system shouldn't have to attend financial meetings to get that information. They shouldn't have to, they shouldn't have to bring it up on their computers, even if they can't attend it. I know that everybody says it's easy to access. It's there. But an engaged parent can be engaged without being able to find everything online. They need to either have it very readily accessible to them, better explained. I know if the business community thinks that you're doing great, or the finance committee thinks you're doing great, those are people that are used to seeing that information. And I think that we, as a district, if we're asking taxpayers to pay more money, and even though some people are invested and they realize that that's a necessity, then we need to make sure that we are explaining every penny that we're spending. And it needs to be there, and it needs to be readily available in really easy-to-understand terms for our parents and our community to look up.
Thank you. For parents, students, and teachers, one of the most important issues is ensuring schools are safe. At the same time, Indianapolis Public Schools has ongoing discipline disparities. Black students are more than twice as likely to be suspended than their white peers, according to federal data from 2015-16. How should the district balance the need for safety with the importance of keeping students in class? What is the role of alternative discipline practices like restorative justice? You could start, Susan.
I strongly believe in restorative justice. While I was at Manuel High School, we had a localized, within the school, teen court, and we also pursued, in leaps, which was leadership, education, public service, small school, we pursued alternatives to strict discipline, suspension. We tried to avoid suspension and have more of a, what can the child do making amends, if you will. So I strongly believe in restorative justice. However, it's been my experience that suspension is used as a tool. I have seen it used in some of the innovation schools, and where it is overused. I have I have seen it used where, at the opposite end, where there is no suspension, and so children run amok in the hallways. So, I think there has to be a balance. I think that the district should invest in more pragmatic means of restorative justice. I think it has a lot of potential for solving some of the discipline problems.
Jody?
Restorative justice is the wave of the future in successfully educating our students. I believe that 100%. It's a system that needs to probably be started from the ground up, pre-K, kindergarten, where we're sending our kids that are acting up or having problems to a social worker instead of a disciplinary agent. I think creating that culture in younger grades and having it evolve through to middle school and high school would provide a better success level. The problem with school safety, as it's kind of defined by our culture so far, is putting more police officers or metal detectors or locking doors, when a lot of times, school safety might be better solved by more support staff, more social workers, more guidance counselors, to see why we have kids that are, you know, creating problems and what we can do to support those students so that they can be engaged in school. There's going to be a huge learning curve in this process, and it's going to take a lot of education with the community to be able to say why we are doing alternative forms of, you know, disciplinary measures when we have problems with a student, because parents are really scared right now of what's going on in our school culture. I haven't seen a lot of that translate into IPS. I said, I have a student at Arsenal Tech High School. I don't feel he's in danger when he's at school there. The huge fight that happened was a pretty normal thing when I was in high school and pretty normal at Tech. That stemmed from a, that stemmed from a threat of suspension for two weeks from the administration for dress code violations and a buildup of tension. And that is not, that's not the path that we need to take when students aren't abiding by school policies.
So, I agree with both Susan and Jody that in order to really address this in a meaningful way, we need to have multi-pronged, multifaceted approaches, and it needs to be happening everywhere, and it needs to be happening across our entire culture. I also know that it's a problem that has been built over time, and to dismantle something as institutionalized as our discipline practices, it's going to take time. And we have to give our teachers the tools that they need. They're not prepared, often in schools of ed. I think that's starting to change, a lot more trauma-informed practice and social-emotional learning and restorative justice, all of those things. But we will not do it alone. We will do it with our community partners, Peace Learning, with, you know, anyone who wants to help us on this issue. The problem is big, and we can use lots of partners. So, I think we're in agreement there.
State test scores were recently released, and for the fourth year in a row, passing rates in Indianapolis Public Schools on both the math and English tests have declined. At three high schools, the number of students who both passed, who passed both tests was in the single digits. How seriously should the district take those test results? Should it reconsider its strategy? If you could begin, Jody?
I know that as a parent, there are huge problems with the testing process, so I would question the results on that to begin with. I definitely think we need a new test, and I'm not a fan of testing. I know it's a necessity in some areas. It's just something that I think teaching to the test is bad policy, and teaching our kids, giving our teachers the supports that they need to make sure that the kids are getting the best out of their learning environment will inevitably raise test scores, because then the kids will be getting the core ideals that they're being tested on. And so, basically, the chicken and the egg syndrome. If we can improve the way that we're educating our students, then we can increase test scores. I want to be on a board and be in a district that is working towards that as the end means and not just trying to improve test scores by just improving test scores, and, and stop a culture where we're encouraging or making our teachers teach to a test.
The kind of scores that we saw are just not acceptable. They're not okay. And that's why it's really important that we continue a strategy that we put in place. You know, these, the tests were taken before we made the move to transform our high schools. So, we will be watching to see whether that strategy makes any difference. So, in a sense, those dismal scores are somewhat of a baseline of where we started out with the old system, the previous way of doing high school in IPS, and hopefully, moving forward, we will see some improvement, some changes. The debate over standardized testing, how much, what it is, whether Indiana's tests are reliable, valid, all of those things, is kind of a long, separate debate. But I will say that I do stand with most civil rights organizations in this country who do support the use of some measures, because if you're not looking at what subgroups of students are doing, you can hide the kind of disparities and disproportionality of achievement that, that we, that occurred in the past. And so, so I do support that we have some common measures where we can be held accountable for how we educate all of our students.
Susan?
I believe, as an educator, that there are steps to good pedagogy, and one of them is instruction, formative assessment, flexibility and reinstruction, or, or moving kids on who know the skills and concepts that they learned the first time, and then interventions with those who don't know. Continuing that process of instruction, formative assessment, instruction, or moving on, or remediation. I believe that instruction, that schools should follow that particular pattern of pedagogy. So, the, the, the idea that you can test everybody in a state on the same exact test, and some, some children are taking it online, some are taking it paper and pencil, some are taking it with extended time, I just think it is, it is, it is something that, it is a plan that is too big, that we need to downsize and be more flexible in our testing. And no, yes, we have to seriously take the testing for the district. We have to take that seriously, but at the same time, what are we doing in the schools? Are we instructing and doing formative assessments, remediation, or instruction further and more formative assessments?
Many schools in the district have chronic problems, from low test scores to high teacher turnover. What strategies should the district use to improve its most troubled schools? If you could start, Mary Ann?
Well, I think the strategy that we have in place, which is recognizing that the unit of change is the school. And so, the ingredients every school needs to have to be successful are strong school leaders, who are able to choose their staff, a talented staff that works collaboratively within that school culture, engaged parents who feel part of what's happening in their child's school. I think we have so many diverse families with children with diverse needs across this district, so we need to make sure that every child is in the right-fit school for their, for their needs and for their family's needs, so we need lots of choices. And then, we need to continuously look at our lowest-performing schools with an eye to always being better at what we do. So, it's about continuous improvement. We'll never hit the mark, because the mark is always moving higher. So, it's a process, a commitment to a process that begins at the school level.
I believe that, that teaching and education of children is based on a triangle. On one point of the triangle is a teacher, on another point of the triangle is a parent, on another point of the triangle is a support services, and the child is in the center. And that we should always, every school should keep that in mind, the child is at the center. So, what support services has that school or can that school put in place to make sure that every child succeeds or grows in their understanding and in their skills, concepts, and academic growth? As far as teachers go, I think that a school should be balanced with teachers who are veterans, as well as teachers who are new. To fill a school with teachers who are not completely committed to the occupation itself, or then, we, it's a, it's a loose, loose and weak sister arrangement. I think that every school for improvement should have a strong leader, one single leader at, at the best, from, from year to year. Some of our schools have had two principals in a year. This, this creates instability. So, I would keep in mind the triangle, teacher, parent, support services, with a child in the middle.
I agree, we're, our, our schools need stronger leadership. I said, my son has had four different principals at Arsenal Tech High School, and I, I believe one of the problems with some of our school leadership, the principals that are being hired in, is that they are out of touch with our district. I would like to see more school leaders promoted from within IPS, because we know that they have a dedication to the district. There's a certain passion that I think any teacher or administrator that works in IPS has for our students and for our community, and they get it. So, hiring principals from outside regions that just don't quite know what's going on is one of the things that's leading to the instability of, of our schools and causing a lot of teacher turnover, including in Arsenal Tech. I've seen lots of good teachers go because there's poor leadership and poor support. I personally would like to see a peer-reviewed teaching model where teachers review other teachers, and, so that they can lift each other up, support each other. I would also like to see administrations be held responsible, or, the teachers are the ones that can oust a principal if they don't think that he's doing well, or she's doing well. I would like to see the autonomous principal model keep, continue. I, I feel that a principal is leading the school, and they should have that power to lead and hire their staff. I also think the staff should have some say if they don't feel like the principal is doing a good job or making decisions that are not supportive of them as a whole, and they should have some power and authority to change that with a process of trying to communicate change or being able to remove someone that they don't feel is a good leader for their particular school.
Indianapolis Public Schools serves some of the most disadvantaged students in the state. It also serves students from affluent families. What can the district do to make sure students of color and those from low-income families have access to the same opportunities as their more privileged peers?
Susan?
Okay. I, I heard it said that Indianapolis is a majority-minority city, and I personally work with children who are in foster care. So, I have seen firsthand some of the disadvantages. I, when I was a teacher, I was, of course, familiar with the students who were at Manuel High School, but as a, a, another literacy coach, sorry, a literacy coach, I traveled through Northwest and Tech, and so, I, I got a broad perspective of the, of the city and its needs. I think that good programs should be widespread. I think to put unproven, unproven programs in schools of high need or areas of high need is, is too much risk. I think that areas of high need need strong programs, and those are what should go into the schools. I also know from the speaking with parents that parents want schools close to them. They fear, or they are unable to get children across town. So, neighborhood schools that have strong, proven programs will help stabilize all children.
Two issues that Chalkbeat has reported on that I'd, I'd be interested in hearing your views on are sort of access to popular magnet schools and also access to gifted programs, which we had a story about today. If you want to.
Oh, does this question towards me?
Um, no, I just, I just wanted to elaborate on my last question.
Well, yeah, I was going there. You know, we've, as a parent of a CFI student, who I said, I see the benefit of what CFI gave my child, you know, on a daily basis. It's a, it is a good program. It's not the only program. We have a really great Montessori program. We have some other programs that have popped up that are still on a, kind of an innovation network and are still, you know, to be seen if they're going to be as strong as CFI. But we keep replicating these and putting these on the north side of our district when we have far-reaching east, west, and south side, you know, families that just, that they want, yeah, they want to send their kids close, and they don't have that opportunity. When Shortridge came, you know, it's central located in, you know, in the district, to say, but it's still, I think there was a lot of affluent parent voices that got it where it is, and I think it would have been more beneficial to have that program a little further out and be able to, be an option for our other families to attend. We just need to put good schools in good neighborhoods and, you know, then replicating those models where the kids have, that need it most, have access to it.
Yeah, so, I've said before that the district needs to start moving a lot of the popular programs more across the district to all areas of the city. I think we're in a better position to do that now, because we're getting ready to really look at kind of just district needs going into the future for facilities utilization. If we could do everything at once, we would, but we have to do things kind of in sequence. So, we're at the point now where we can start really looking at population demographics, facility usage, and figure out the best place, because what people need to realize is every time you open a choice program, then you may possibly displace families who are zoned to that school. So, we need to have more than a method to our madness. We also need to maybe look at creating more formalized networks within the district, so maximizing the relationship between the common programmings like CFI, like Montessori, if we have STEM programming, movement-based education, those kinds of things, so that there's an internal support network. In terms of gifted education, really appreciate the series that's going on right now, looking at that issue, and that's actually where I started out many, many, many years ago. And know that the under-identification of low-income and minority students has been a problem for a long, long time. I'm very proud of what our district is doing to intentionally address that problem, and I look forward to seeing much more representation, much, much more representative populations in all of our programming.
And I just wanted to give a reminder to the audience, if you have questions, you can raise your hand and put them down on an index card, and for our audience at home, you can tweet them with the hashtag IPSform. Indianapolis Public Schools recently closed three of its high schools and adopted, adopted an all-choice model where students choose a school based on their interests. Do you support the all-choice academy model, and how would you like to see it change or develop? Jody? Thank you.
I, as a parent of a student in a magnet at Arsenal Tech, it really disrupted a lot of the magnets that were already there. There's a lot of change for change's sake going on in our district. I've seen a lot of change and not a lot of patience in seeing if that would be implemented. I don't understand why the, you know, magnet options that we had that seemed to provide a lot of choice already were, were changed around and then, you know, caused even more disruption, even more communication, confusion to our families, as like, you know, what is really best for my child? Because I, I think at some point, it can get a little overwhelming, and the curriculum at Tech has changed to a point where now he can't get into some of the classes that he wants. the classes that he wants to. And it's it's just disruptive when you just keep changing and changing and changing, especially when the district was doing a good job with the programs that they had. They keep shuffling them around, closing down high schools, you know, shifting kids in the middle, you know, in the middle of their high school career is a very disruptive thing, and the students are going to respond to that usually in a negative way.
How would you like to see it develop going forward from here?
Well, I think it's always probably better to start it from a kindergarten aspect up, just so that, and I don't know the model for that, but is being able to grandfather students in that are already in process of a program so that they don't have to choose a new program or to choose a new high school. And I think that's concentrating, that's the problem with concentrating certain magnets at certain schools. You know, it would be really great if we could offer some of those programs at every school so that you could choose your high school, and then that choice program is available at every high school. And I don't think that would be too hard to do because most of the curriculum is the same. It's just a matter of the concentration and how it's taught.
Marian? So this time I do have to disagree with Jody because I don't think we were doing well. I don't think all was all right with IPS. I think that we were patient for too long with strategies that weren't moving the needle for kids. So I don't think we're doing change for the sake of change. I think we're being incredibly strategic. I think we're being really thoughtful about what we know nationally is best practice. Our move towards college and career pathways for students is something that is happening across this country. If we do it well, I think we will have big results. If we, like anything else, don't do it well, then we'll be back looking for that next change. So I want to stay the course and invest in the strategies that we have underway, recognizing that kind of some of the biggest changes, the heaviest lifts, are now behind us. So now it's time to to work these new innovations and see if they are indeed effective.
Yesterday, I was walking my dog in my neighborhood and canvassing, and I stopped and talked to a group of teens on one of the front yards in my on my street and asked them if there was someone there from IPS that I could give my card to, and they said, "We're all IPS." And I said, "Great, can you tell me a little bit about the schools you go to?" And they said, "We go to Shortridge." "Oh, all right." I said, "How do you like that IB program?" Well, they said, "But we're from Broad Ripple." And so I said, "Well, how do you feel about being at Shortridge?" And one young lady said, "We lost everything." So I do not believe in, well, I tried to be conciliatory, and I said, "Well, you know, the district didn't have enough kids in Broad Ripple, so we had to close it." And one young man said, "Then why didn't they recruit more kids?" And so it's a good question, you know? Why do we let our good programs die? And I was I had a was part of the small school movement several years ago that was funded by the Bill Gates Grant. And at Manuel High School, we loved our four small schools. We had Star Academy, we had Leaps, we had a technology small school and a couple of others. We worked as a team in collaborating, discussing how those those schools were working, whether we needed to close one the following year. But then Bill Gates pulled his money out, and so everything fell apart on that.
What would you like to see the district do with its high schools going forward?
I do not want to see any high schools closed. We're still paying on the improvements made on Howe, on Manuel High School, on Northwest. And those that's part of our debt load. And so I would I I feel like the high schools have long legacies and that this city, their high schools are part of their history and their story. And I don't want to see any more high schools closed.
The district leadership often faces criticism from community members who argue that the embrace of partnerships with charter schools is eroding public education. How should the district balance conflicting opinions? And I'll start with you, Marian.
So the differences between charter, are you talking about charter schools in general or charter schools that we are partnering with?
I'm talking about how the district should handle the sort of ongoing debate and criticism that it has faced over these decisions that it's made.
In terms of innovation partnerships?
Yeah, in terms of innovation partnerships.
Yes, yeah. So I think focus people are focusing on the wrong things with that. I think that what's important is the student experience and whether or not we're improving educational outcomes and opportunities for our students. I think that partnering with charter schools is only one part of our strategy. It is not the entire strategy. So it remains to be seen. I think we've got some really, really promising early indications that this is that is a strategy that's working, but I'm not going to celebrate that quite yet, so and claim more than we can claim. But I think that charter schools are here to stay, whether people love them, hate them, anything in between. And the best interest of children is that all the adults work together to figure out how to provide them with the best opportunities in every neighborhood.
Indianapolis has positioned itself with outside money and and political interests to create portfolio schools. Portfolio schools are what our innovation schools are, as well as our neighborhood schools, as well as our charter partnerships. I believe that there is too much too much incursion by business interests in the education of our children and that Indianapolis, parents, communities, neighborhoods, churches, the institutions that are here in Indianapolis should have more of a say about what kind of innovations are made within our school system.
I don't think I don't think charter schools are here to stay, at least I hope they're not. I want to see our public schools stay public. I don't think that our children should be commodities. I don't think that they should be profit-driven. I am not against new models of, you know, what we call innovation schools, you know, different curriculums. I'm not a fan of partnerships, though. It's either all-in or all-out. You know, we can take in these models and these curriculums under the IPS brand, and then they follow IPS policy, rules, regulations, and we take it on wholeheartedly, or we let them be, and then we continue to build our public school system up to where it should be. It should be public, it should be valued by the public, it should be ran by the public, and nobody should profit off of our kids.
If you win a seat on the board, what is your long-term vision for the district? What would it look like in five or 10 years down the line? And if you could start, Susan?
Well, I would like our district to be an example of public school. And I would like to our district to be an example of how the city took charge of its schools and made a difference in the performance, the achievement, and the quality of life for the children in IPS. I would like to see in 10 years, high schools that are solvent, I would like to see, well, high schools and all the schools solvent. I would like to see fewer outside influences on IPS and where the money's coming from. Of course, I would also like to see some of the attitudes in our legislature change as to funding our schools. And I think that if the city organizes itself to protest or to put the right people into government positions and positions of authority, that things will change.
I would like to see our district do a really good campaign of engaging our community back into our children and our schools, working on a community level, communities adopting schools. There's a lot of disconnect between, you know, communities and especially families that might not have kids and they might live right next door, and then they're never there, they're never volunteering. I'd like to see a school board in a district that really, really engages the city to and get themselves involved and get themselves excited about our district again. And I would like to see our high schools open back up everywhere in our district because I don't think that's going to be possible when we're busing kids from West 38th Street, you know, 10 miles, and they're on a bus for two hours a day. So I'd like to see a way in the next 10 years to get our high schools open back up, get our enrollment back up, make our schools a community that kids, parents, members want to be involved in, want to support. I'd like to see a school board that gets a little bit more radical about lobbying the city, lobbying the state legislature. We're a bipartisan group, so, you know, we have our students' best interests at heart. So we can encourage, educate our community to vote for the people that are slashing our education budget. We can encourage them to, you know, vote the people out that are not allowing us to get into, you know, TIF funds that could be used for schools instead of stadium development. We really could take that position as a board and really, really work to be a voice for our for our IPS community.
So I guess listening to Susan and Jody speak makes me really sad because the things they're saying are a lot of the kinds of things I said 35, 40 years ago. And it is clear that we will not get to a system of great schools in the city of Indianapolis if we regress, if we start fighting adult battles again, rather than putting the needs of children, communities, families first, whether whether we work or how we work collaboratively with neighborhood partners, with the city of Indianapolis, with community partners. It is sad to think of drawing all those lines again. Because people don't want to recognize charter schools as public schools does not make them not public schools. They are public schools. So there's so much misinformation, and again, I'm just very sad that we still have the same kind of conversations that take take our eyes off the prize of being able to offer every single kid in the city of Indianapolis a great opportunity, a school that they and their family feel good about, that positions them for a successful life. So I would like to have more conversations about where we're going, what's possible, and not a return to something that I don't think were ever really glory days, especially not for too many of our students of color and students in poverty.
What are your views on Superintendent Farabee's administration? Would you support keeping him in the district? Jody?
I, one of the things that I would work on if I were elected to the board is a new administration hired from ideally the IPS community. I'd like to see a leader that's put their time into IPS. We have a lot of good administrators that have put, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, and they're not doing it for a paycheck. They know our communities, they know our families, they know our schools, they know our teachers. I want to see a new administration that is hired from within and is able to lead our schools forward. I think that would instill some new trust, not only with the community but with the staff. You know, we have we have teachers that are fleeing the district, and I know they don't want to. They've really, really tried to hang on, and I think a lot of that is with the administration that we have now is just out of touch with what the district actually needs to move forward.
Marian? Yeah, actually, there's new data on our attrition rates, and we are much better than we were in the last few years. So you might be interested when that data is released. So in terms of hiring talent, I will never apologize for hiring talent. And where you get that talent, whether it's in the system, whether it's outside of the system, the needs are so great in our district and with our children that it is a responsibility of the board to always, always, always look for the best and brightest everywhere that we can get them. When you hire talent, you have to be competitive with salaries. And so that is my commitment, to bring as much, as many resources as possible to be able to hire the best and brightest teachers, the best and brightest administrators, and the best and brightest district-level personnel to do great things in IPS.
I think Dr. Farabee's contract will be up in 2019. So if he chose to stay, then I would request a less of a mindset or an attitude towards working with businesses and outside interests as well as promoting himself as the leadership that he is. And I would like to see someone who maybe is not quite as connected to charter schools or sympathetic to charter schools. The voucher system alone took $6 million away from IPS schools. So the charter schools are still taking money that we would norm, we would be teaching those children. So I would like to see a superintendent who is not so in the pocket of outside interests and the the soupe du jour of what school should look like from the business perspective.
We're going to move on to some questions from the audience. All right. So these are questions that we've gotten from the audience. Many studies have shown that quality teachers are the greatest factor in student achievement, and we know that IPS struggles with a shortage particularly of math and science teachers, special education teachers. How do you see teacher recruitment and retention moving forward in IPS? And if you could begin, Marian?
I think we have all kinds of efforts underway right now trying to address that problem. The Relay Graduate Program, the Teacher Pipeline Programs at Marion at IUPUI. Again, we're casting wide nets. We're looking nationally. We're not alone in the market for great teachers, and to think otherwise is just not accurate. However, that doesn't mean we can't do amazing jobs growing our own. I'm really excited with our programs at Attix for future teachers. I hope that we convince kids early that it's a great occupation, it's a great career, and have those homegrown kids who are able to stay in our community. So I think there's very few things that there's only one answer. There are many approaches, and we need to take all of them. I think we have a pretty amazing HR department right now that is very innovative in their recruitment practices and in managing our workforce.
Susan?
I have to say that as a teacher and a continuing educator, I have been saddened by the state of the occupation, the career, the calling, if you will, of the of teachers, for teachers. When I was a teacher, I had five student teachers who I supervised, and I knew them to be strong in their educational practice. And I was there, as well as other people from the universities, were there to support them in their growth so that they can go into a classroom. I'm a little concerned. I also was a supervisor for, not for Teach for America, but for one of the national programs. But and so I understand when someone comes out of college with a degree, they're not necessarily inclined to necessarily inclined to be teachers. And to give someone two years to grow, to get their masters, that's quite a plum. That's an incentive that if it was, if it was offered to me at 21, I probably would have taken it. However, I've been a teacher since I was in high school. So I was in the National Teacher, the Teacher Club and then through college, I taught in my summers and I have been involved in education. And I have seen good teachers, teachers with a heart for the children, teachers with a heart for teaching, teachers who know their stuff leave because of the hostile environment against teaching today. And I'm saddened by that.
Yeah, the shortage of teachers is not just IPS, especially in the STEM fields. That's a national crisis really that we're going through. So what, you know, we could do as a district is to make sure that the teachers that we have are supported, not just financially, because, you know, I've talked to many, many, many teachers. I'm sure they would all appreciate a raise. What they want is support staff, they want support in general, you know, from families and from their principals and from their district. So it's really about, you know, creating a culture where we're not shifting around administrations year to year, where we are providing social workers, guidance counselors that, you know, need to be there to support them. And again, you know, I would like to see a peer review and support within and when you're shuffling teachers from school to school, you can't really establish an effective way to do something like that. So it would be about changing the culture. Recruitment programs, especially for teachers of color, I think is going to be really important. So I'd like to explore how we can find those teachers from our city. We obviously have the resources and the schools that are doing it to just find a way to entice those teachers into IPS and then make sure that we are taking care of them once they're here.
And then I have two questions here from someone on transportation. What is your opinion on the school district relying on Indigo for transportation of students? And would you hire more bus drivers?
Relying on, what was it, relying on what?
Relying on Indigo for transport, Indigo buses for transportation, if you could...
I have some strong feelings about that.
Yep.
Well, okay, so I was talking to some parents of children who are in some of the various programs and in a particular neighborhood in the center of the city. And one mom said, you know, I used to, there used to be three buses that come through the neighborhood and they would pick up the kids and they would all come home on the bus and they stayed all night on Saturday night or Friday night and we'd have social life together. She said, now there's eight to 10 buses that come through my neighborhood and they're all taking kids to different places. And she said, it's chaotic. And so my, then, then I went to a referendum meeting and heard about how much money we're spending on gas every week. And so if we're spending $20,000 on gas every week, then wouldn't it be wise to cut down on some of the buses? The buses transporting kids to various points in the city rather than closer to a neighborhood? Now, as a high school teacher, I know that if my students had to get on the bus, they would never have shown up. So because, and you can imagine with our Indigo system, how long have you stood and waited for a bus? You know?
And then the second question was, would you hire more bus drivers?
Well, how about limiting the buses and the transportation itself? So I suppose if you're going to expand innovation schools out to all edges of the district, then you'll have to hire more buses, more bus drivers.
Jody?
That, it seems to be the result of, you know, having these programs where, you know, wherever you live at in the district, if you don't want to go to your traditional neighborhood school, then you can be bussed across lines. So obviously, the best solution in fixing the transportation issue is, yeah, we're wasting a lot of money that could go more directly to students, would be to make sure that we're building, you know, good schools in the district everywhere so that, you know, kids can walk or parents can carpool. You know, that may be, I've thought about this because I lived close to all of my son's schools and I worked downtown, so I took him to school every day. He never rode a bus. And I know that that was ideal for me and I think that's ideal for a lot of parents. Encouraging biking programs, walking programs, carpools. But the key is that we have a problem just the way that the model is set up where we're, you know, spending a lot of money on transportation. You know, also, the fact that in our transportation, we are, you know, busing kids at high schools, home after practice and home after games, which is one of the best things that we can use our transportation money on because there are kids that are able to participate in after-school activities that would never be able to do it otherwise because they would never have a ride to get to where they're going. So that is something that is a priority and needs to stay a priority, hiring more bus drivers. You know, if we have the money to do it, I would like to see, I would like to see the buses be condensed down and, you know, the same bus can pick up kids and take them to, you know, one school and then they can drop them off at another school and setting, you know, a bus. That would be, you know, staggering the start times of schools, which we, you know, have toyed around with. That's, you know, that's just a big issue.
Mary Ann?
There's no equity for students unless we provide transportation to our choice programs. So if we believe that families expect lots of different choices in the types of schools available to their children, then we need to be committed to getting those children to those schools. That said, I will echo the comments of one of my fellow commissioners on the board, Mike O'Connor, who says over and over from a taxpayer perspective, it's incredibly frustrating to see 11 different townships investing in 11 different transportation systems. I would like to see some innovative solutions to moving children to their schools throughout Marion County that creates an efficient system for taxpayers and a timely, effective, safe system for students. So I think we need to think very creatively. I do not think Indigo is at this exact moment ready to provide all of the, meet the transportation needs for this district. Do I think that five years from now they could do that? I don't know. So I think it's a conver, an ongoing conversation that we need to keep having and keep bringing new ideas to the table.
What would you propose to better educate teachers and administrators on issues of institutional racism and how to address cultural inequity? If you could start, Jody?
I think that would be part, the big part of, we were talking about the change of culture and restorative justice and just not giving teachers the means to do some of the practices that create that to begin with. That is probably something that should start at their educational level, you know, at the college level when they're getting their teaching license profession. And it needs to be discussed, it needs to be addressed. I don't think it's, I don't think it's difficult, especially in our day and age to, it's easy to point out, it's easy to see, how, is it easy to fix? I'm not sure. But we, we need to probably have just training programs across the board and really, you know, collecting the data particularly at a school level to make sure that we aren't doing it if we are, you know, instilling practices to prevent it, to make sure that we're keeping an eye and then addressing that of like, you know, hey, you know, our numbers are still not real great in what we're doing, so let's go ahead and change this.
I think there's some really good work going on in this area across the district and it was something I struggled with initially when I came on the board because I do believe that professional development needs to come from the school level and based on the educators and the administrators in that building. And so it's incredibly good to see that that is training that our schools are asking for. And so our cohort groups have been growing across the city. I think professional development is stronger when teachers ask for it versus when districts mandate it. And I think we're seeing that, it's good work, good folks are leading that. I'm also encouraged that the entire community of Indianapolis, organizations like CICF have made that, you know, complete focus of their new work. And so I think it will make it easier for teachers and for our staff when the rest of the community also engages in this work and it's not just done in isolation in the schools.
I think one of the most exciting groups I ever participated in was called a challenge team and it was my students and several teachers in our small school as well as a group of professors and other administration from CEL, which is a group in University of Indianapolis. And the basic idea with a challenge group is that it was a team-building day and we grew to know and to appreciate and to empathize with other people's humanity and where they're coming from and who they are as people. What kind of baggage do we all carry? And it was the most eye-opening and made us all very vulnerable, but we went away, changed. I firmly believe in those kinds of one-on-one, face-to-face trainings that involved different stakeholders like the children, the students, the teachers and people from, who were impacting our school at the time from CEL. It was very, very life-changing. So I agree that everyone should have some kind of training, but there's also discourse within a classroom. And when you look at curriculum that breaks down and critically analyzes the institutional racism that is part of this United States, then you get an education. And you get an education in our civic responsibility as well as the appreciation of the importance of everyone in the community.
And then I'm going to do one last question and this is for Commissioner Sullivan specifically. You're an incumbent board member. What has been done during your tenure that would make voters want to reelect you?
I think that what this board has done has been very methodical and clear and principled. I think that we have stated kind of our core beliefs and where we're starting with building a transformed district. So we are, again, unapologetically transformational and I realize that that transformation has resulted in a lot of change at a fairly quick pace. And so I think one of the things that I would like people to understand is that's kind of front-loaded to, to the strategy. So now that we've built a lot of the foundation, now it's time to support that work and continue on in that way. So I don't see the same level of kind of big changes that people have experienced because, because we've gotten more of a system in place.
All right. We've come to the end of our first section. If you guys could each take a minute to give a final closing statement, beginning with Susan.
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone that I'm part of this community, that I am a teacher and educator. I continue to be active in the community. I am committed to Indianapolis. I have no great political aspirations. I don't have any business interests or other people behind me who are encouraging me to get in there and make changes. I am interested in making changes that are positive and that actually support the people and the children here in Indianapolis. I want to enforce the idea that all schools should be a triangle, teacher, parent, and support around children. And I just am committed and I believe in community.
While I'm running for a school board position, I've obviously been spouting out a lot of my own personal views, a lot of my own ideas, but I take very, very deeply the responsibility of being an elected person into this position. So I want to do this because I'm passionate about making IPS stay public and stay a viable option for our city, but I also want to be a representative for the community that also has that interest and I want to be able to hear voices, hear ideas. I want to be able to listen to families and take their needs and concerns to heart without, as I said, also no inside or outside influence. I won't say I won't ever run for another political office, but that may be very far in the future. This is my first go at it and I'm really excited about an opportunity to be able to work and listen.
This has been my life's work and where I'm at now, I think I feel maybe the most impactful that I've ever felt in terms of actually being able to do good things for and with kids. The idea that there's any kind of outside sort of pressure, influence, or manipulation is rather comical to anyone who knows me well. I'm probably one of the most stubborn, determined people around. The conclusions I've come to about the best course of action are my own conclusions based on my own life experience, my own studies and my own, my own work. So, but it's not about me, it's about the kids in this district. And they're the same kids that I've been trying to support since I started doing this work almost 40 years ago. So I feel really good about that. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you all for joining us and thank you to our partners for tonight's forum, WFYI, the Indianapolis Library and the Recorder. We are going to take a brief break and reconvene at 6:30 for our second panel with candidates for the number three and number five board seats. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
my own personal views, a lot of my own ideas, but I take very, very deeply the responsibility of being an elected person into this position. So, I want to do this because I'm passionate about making IPS stay public and stay a viable option for our city, but I also want to be a representative for the community that also has that interest. And I want to be able to hear voices, hear ideas. I want to be able to listen to families and take their needs and concerns to heart without, as I said, also no inside or outside influence. I won't say I won't ever run for another political office, but that may be very far in the future. This is my first go at it, and I'm really excited about an opportunity to be able to work and listen.
This has been my life's work. And where I'm at now, I think I feel maybe the most impactful that I've ever felt in terms of actually being able to do good things for and with kids. The idea that there's any kind of outside sort of pressure, influence, or manipulation is rather comical to anyone who knows me well. I'm probably one of the most stubborn, determined people around. The conclusions I've come to about the best course of action are my own conclusions based on my own life experience, my own studies, and my own work. But it's not about me. It's about the kids in this district. And they're the same kids that I've been trying to support since I started doing this work almost 40 years ago. So, I feel really good about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us, and thank you to our partners for tonight's forum, WFYI, the Indianapolis Library, and The Recorder. We are going to take a brief break and reconvene at 6:30 for our second panel with candidates for the number three and number five board seats. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We're about to get started if you all want to have a seat.
Welcome back. I'm Dylan Pierce McCoy, an education reporter for Chalkbeat, Indiana. Thank you for joining us for this discussion with the candidates for the Indianapolis Public Schools Board. Thanks to our partners tonight, WFYI, the Indianapolis Library, and The Recorder. Earlier this evening, we heard from candidates for an at-large seat on the board. Now, you'll meet candidates for seats representing District Three, which includes the north side of IPS, and Five, which covers the northwest side of the districts. If you have questions for the candidates, please write them on index cards. Raise your hand and we can bring you an index card or collect your card once you've written down your question. And for those watching at home, you can tweet questions using the hashtag #IPSform. For the final panel, we'll take questions until 7:15, and our discussion will end at about 7:45. So, to begin with, can you briefly introduce yourselves, the seat you're running for, and then share a little bit about your background and why you're running for the school board? And if you could start us off, Evan, and then we'll work our way down.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm running for District Three, School Board Commissioner's seat. So, again, my name is Evan Hawkins, and I'm a lifelong resident of Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm an IPS dad, and I truly believe that all children deserve the very best schools and opportunities regardless of their geographic location or socioeconomic circumstance. I currently serve as the Executive Director of Facilities and Procurement at Marion University here on the near west side. I'm responsible for the facilities and the operational affairs of the institution. Prior to, earlier in my career, I worked in the criminal justice sector and specifically with the Indiana Department of Correction. And I can tell you that I witnessed the harsh realities of institutionalization, of incarceration, and particularly witnessing this for young men and women that look like me. And so, that reality and that circumstance caused me to take a pause and a timeout to reconsider where my, what my pathway would be. And that led me to the primary and secondary educational world, then moving my way along to become a Chief Operating Officer. So, as Commissioner in District Three, my priorities will be, first and foremost, that all children receive the very best opportunities, the best schools regardless of where they're from. Secondly, I want to enhance and frankly double down on teacher recruitment and retention. That's critical. And then, thirdly, we must solidify our financial position, which means a strong, sustainable, and transparent financial future for IPS. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michelle Lorbeski. I'm running for District Three. In my day job, I'm a partner at a law firm. And anyone that would have talked to my seven-year-old self would have heard that I wanted to be a lawyer when I grew up. And at seven years old, I was dreaming really big because at seven, I was living in poverty. I was being raised by a single mom who was just trying to get by on welfare. And so, she enrolled me into public schools because that was her only choice. And those public schools gave me the solid foundation that I needed to be the first person in my family to graduate from college at DePaul University. I was the first person in my family to even think about law school, much less graduate with honors. And I owe my success today to a lot of hard work and the support of my family, my community, and especially public school teachers. And so, I've worked my entire adult life to pay that forward by volunteering for organizations that work to improve the lives of children. And so, I'd like to continue my service on the IPS School Board because I want to make sure that all IPS students, including my daughter, who's sitting right there and attends IPS91, that they all have the solid educational foundation that they need to make their dreams come true, just like mine did.
Good evening. My name is Doreen Rodriguez-Hoops, and I am the incumbent for District Five. I was appointed two years ago when Commissioner Lanier Nichols resigned. And let me tell you a little bit about my story and why I'm passionate about education and why I'd like to continue to serve on the board and make a difference. I also had a great opportunity to go to school through a wonderful school system. I was raised by a single mom that knew that education was the ladder for opportunity for me. And so, it transformed my life, and I went on to college and grad school and pursued a career of my choice, human resources, where I worked with various organizations and developed effective HR programs. Along the way, I had a son, who I have two children attending IPS, but my son has cerebral palsy, and really opened up my eyes to a whole other area of education that I hadn't frankly thought about before. So, I became his fierce advocate to ensure that he had all the supports and services that he needed to succeed. So, I see myself as an advocate for all IPS children to ensure that they succeed in school. And without the education that I had and the support from the community that I lived in, I wouldn't be here this evening. So, I'm very motivated and dedicated to ensure that all IPS students have the same opportunity to succeed.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Shelton. I'm running for District Three. I am K-12 IPS, attended school number 43, and then on to Broad Ripple High School. I am running for school board for a number of reasons. I'm running for kids that were like me when I was at school 43 and then on to Broad Ripple. I'm running because our kids need an advocate. They need an advocate for equity, and I need them to have a chance at success. I'm running to make a difference and to help to evaluate some of the programs that we currently have, whether it be choice, innovation, restart, the different titles magnets, to look at those schools and to make sure that they're working for all kids, not just a group of kids. I'm looking at that majority of 27,000 kids that I need those programs to work for. I'm running to look at the finances. I want to be that financial steward for the community. I'm running because I just want to make a difference, and I want to make sure that the playing field is leveled for the kids. So, it's funny how this all happened. My daughter's sitting out there in the middle. I kind of thought about this a few weeks before that deadline, and I thought I have to stop talking about it and I have to do something about it. I have to step forward. So, this is totally new for me. I'm not endorsed by anyone. I didn't seek any endorsements. I didn't respond back to the surveys because I'm looking for you to endorse me as a parent, the community, teacher, staff, because I've worked over 20 years in education. I've been a consultant. I've been a contractor. I've been a district administrator. I've worked in IPS. I've been all around, and I've worked from the top to the bottom with the students in the trenches on projects, modeling, doing professional development with teachers, planning with principals, planning at the district level, doing lots of data. So, I've done so much in my career. So, I'm running to share that, to bring a different perspective, have different insight, and to help work through the things that are happening in IPS. It was great when I was there, and I think it can be a great school district again. So, I'm Sherri Shelton.
Hello. My name is Churia Slack, and I'm running for District Five and for IPS School Board. I am a wife of an educator who is also an Arsenal Tech alumnus. I am a mother of three IPS children that all attend IPS schools. I am a community advocate that works hard in building neighborhoods, both domestically and internationally. I've mentored children. I've went, me and my husband, overseas to about 30 different countries. I've taught in China and Japan. I am a public servant. I have worked for the federal government for over a decade now, helping different people from different demographics and socioeconomic statuses. As a parent, I have seen the distractions that have plagued our district for far too long, and I want to do something about that. I want to help our kids achieve academic success, and that is why I'm running.
The district is asking voters for $272 million in additional funding for schools with two referendums this fall. One would fund building improvements, the other would go to operating expenses. Do you support those referendums, and what is your reasoning? And do you think they'll pass? And if we could start with Michelle?
Sure. I do support both referenda. I certainly do hope they pass because already with the financial crunch that the district is under, the district has had to make some hard choices that have affected our students, including closing schools and teacher freezes, teacher pay freezes. And so, I hope that they pass so that we can raise teacher pay. I think that the success of our students begins in the classroom. And I don't know about you, but I would have a hard time staying in a profession where I'm making 16% less today than I made in 2000. These teachers are great public servants, but they're not angels. They have to make a living. They have to pay their bills. And if we want to recruit and retain teachers, which is the key to success of our students, we need to-
Good evening. My name is Doreen Rodriguez-Hoops, and I am the incumbent for District 5. I was appointed two years ago when Commissioner Lanier Nichols resigned. And let me tell you a little bit about my story and why I'm passionate about education, and why I'd like to continue to serve on the Board and make a difference. I also had a great opportunity to go to school through a wonderful school system. I was raised by a single mom that knew that education was the ladder for opportunity for me. And so it transformed my life, and I went on to college and grad school and pursued a career of my choice, human resources, where I worked with various organizations and developed effective HR programs. Along the way, I had a son, who, I have two children attending IPS, but my son has cerebral palsy, and really opened up my eyes to a whole other area of education that I hadn't frankly thought about before. So I became his fierce advocate to ensure that he had all the supports and services that he needed to succeed. So I see myself as an advocate for all IPS children to ensure that they succeed in school. And, you know, without the education that I had and the support from the community that I lived in, I wouldn't be here this evening. So I'm very motivated and dedicated to ensure that all IPS students have the same opportunity to succeed.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Shelton. I'm running for District 3. I am K-12 IPS, attended school number 43, and then on to Broad Ripple High School. I am running for school board for a number of reasons. I'm running for kids that were like me when I was at school 43 and then on to Broad Ripple. I'm running because our kids need an advocate. They need an advocate for equity. And I need them to have a chance at success. I'm running to make a difference and to help to evaluate some of the programs that we currently have, whether it be choice, innovation, restart, the different titles magnets, to look at those schools and to make sure that they're working for all kids, not just a group of kids. I'm looking at that majority of 27,000 kids that I need those programs to work for. I'm running to look at the finances. I want to be that financial steward for the community. I'm running because I just want to make a difference, and I want to make sure that the playing field is leveled for the kids. So, it's funny how this all happened. My daughter's sitting out there in the middle. I kind of thought about this a few weeks before that deadline, and I thought, I have to stop talking about it, and I have to do something about it. I have to step forward. So this is totally new for me. I'm not endorsed by anyone. I didn't seek any endorsements. I didn't respond back to the surveys, because I'm looking for you to endorse me as a parent, the community, teacher staff, because I've worked over 20 years in education. I've been a consultant. I've been a contractor. I've been a district administrator. I've worked in IPS. I've been all around, and I've worked from the top to the bottom with the students in the trenches on projects, modeling, doing professional development with teachers, planning with principals, planning at the district level, doing lots with data. So I've done so much in my career. So I'm running to share that, to bring a different perspective, have different insight, and to help work through the things that are happening in IPS. It was great when I was there, and I think it can be a great school district again. So, I'm Sherri Shelton.
Hello, my name is Turiya Slack, and I'm running for District 5 and for IPS School Board. I am a wife of an educator, who is also an Arsenal Tech alumnus. I am a mother of three IPS children that all attend IPS schools. I am a community advocate that works hard in building neighborhoods, both domestically and internationally. I've mentored children. I've went, me and my husband, overseas to about 30 different countries. I've taught in China and Japan. I am a public servant. I have worked for the federal government for over a decade now, helping different people from different demographics and socioeconomic statuses. As a parent, I have seen the distractions that have plagued our district for far too long, and I want to do something about that. I want to help our kids achieve academic success, and that is why I'm running.
The district is asking voters for $272 million in additional funding for schools with two referendums this fall. One would fund building improvements, the other would go to operating expenses. Do you support those referendums, and what is your reasoning? And do you think they'll pass? And if we could start with Michelle?
Sure. I do support both referenda. I certainly do hope they pass, because already with the financial crunch that the district is under, the district has had to make some hard choices that have affected our students, including closing schools and teacher freezes, teacher pay freezes. And so I hope that they pass so that we can raise teacher pay. I think that the success of our students begins in the classroom. And I don't know about you, but I would have a hard time staying in a profession where I'm making 16% less today than I made in 2000. These teachers are great public servants, but they're not angels. They have to make a living. They have to pay their bills. And if we want to recruit and retain teachers, which is the key to success of our students, we need to raise their pay, and that means passing the referenda.
Yes, I support both a referenda. The district has done a good job of looking for opportunities to cost-cut and run operations efficiently. There's still more work to do, but with declining federal, state, and local funds, there's just no way that we can continue to move forward. The critical aspect of the operating referenda is to use all those dollars to increase teacher pay. As Michelle mentioned, if you look at inflation, you take into account current pay, teachers are making less today than they did 10 years ago. And in order for us to attract and retain top talent, we must develop competitive compensation so that we can ensure that we have quality teachers in front of our students, because that's what makes the difference. And with regards to the capital referenda, it's important that we make all our buildings safe and secure. And so those dollars, 80% of those dollars will ensure that we do that, and the other 20% will be some capital improvements. We are still leaving quite a bit of capital improvements on the table, but that's the focus of this particular capital referendum at this time.
I do not support the referendum, and the reason I do not support it at the time is because I think that the public deserves to have more information. I think it needs to be detailed from beginning to end. Example, teacher salary. I do lots with budget on my job, so I know that can be laid out to first year, one, eight years. A teacher that's making $40,000 is going to get 2% raise. It's going to equate to this, second year, all the way out to eight. I need a map or roadmap, a blueprint, a mega workbook that shows me how every dollar will be spent. And most of all, I need a commitment to the teachers, saying that they're going to get those dollars. A meeting last Monday, 100% was going to go to teachers, meeting Thursday, all of it. But, we want to include the administrators. I need a commitment, and I need details for the public before I vote yes.
Well, my husband goes to work every day as an educator. So I know firsthand that teachers are not compensated for what they do every day, inside and outside of the classroom. So do I support the referenda? There's more questions than answers when it comes to the referenda. What I do support is higher teacher compensation. Managing the funds that we already have, and managing the funds that we will get in the future, and helping those funds go directly to the classrooms for those kids that are not represented by the public or the school system right now.
With regard to the referendum, two public questions. The first one I'll respond to is with regard to the capital referenda for $52 million. I am, I will vote, as a parent, taxpayer, and member of our community, in favor of that referendum. Personally, I have concerns. I don't think it's enough, but it's where we are today. The average age of our buildings in the district, I believe the average age of construction is 1955. And so take that in for a moment, just to acknowledge the fact that we're operating in buildings that are behind the times, don't carry necessarily the innovations, the technology, the building systems that our counterparts have in other districts. And so, I support the referenda because we're talking about life safety infrastructures, door locking, technology, those types of things. But deferred maintenance is beyond itself. And so one of the things that I would focus in on would be a facility condition assessment, which needs to happen to help us understand our building infrastructure and where we're going. With regard to the operating referendum, absolutely. My concern again is, is that we need to make sure that we're focusing in on how we pay our teachers more. And right now, what we're committed to through our conversations and our processes is a 2% cost of living adjustment, which isn't enough. And so I am very, very much in favor of both of, and I will vote in favor of both public questions.
The district has faced criticism for failing to involve parents and community members in the decision-making process. What can Indianapolis Public Schools do to reach out and engage the community? What does the administration do well, and what needs improvement? And I'll start with you, Doreen.
Yeah, I think that when it's come to, when I think back of the last couple of years that I've been serving on the Board, about the big challenges that we've had with discussions around high school closures, and also when we were looking at bus transportation schedule changes, we went out and met and spoke to many people at different, you know, areas of the community. But I think that we do need to do a better job of having regular communication and having conversations. Obviously, the public board meetings don't lend themselves to that, but there are other opportunities that we can provide so that we can continue conversations around what's happening in the district. And I'd like to see an annual state of IPS where it's open to the community at large so that we can talk about school performance. We could talk about how we're doing with our finances, that we can bring the community along throughout the year, and have quarterly community meetings where we're doing similar information and having topics of conversation so that we can have interaction and conversation.
I think that when we have the meetings, or I think the current meetings that are happening are not reaching all audiences. Whenever I attend the meetings and I look around the room, the room doesn't reflect the district. So I think we have to be creative in how we approach. I think we have to use social media. I think we have to accept that people communicate differently. So I think we have to have different types of forms. And I think we also have to build teams around, a supportive team around the Board, that can communicate their message. Because it's, we have to make sure that we can reach out to all different types of people. I used an example before that there needs to be a senior community that supports the Board so that when we have things like referendums, that they can go out and communicate peer-to-peer. So same thing with all our different types of citizens and families and communities, that we have to develop different strategies to reach them.
Well, I feel like what the district's doing particularly well right now is reaching out to these 21st century businesses and corporations in order to get their input. But what they're missing is the inputs of this other stakeholders, the students, the teachers, the communities, the voices that have not been heard. And I think that if we do a better job of that, we can bring home a sense of community and transparency across the Board. But without that, we're leaving out the most important asset, which is our children. I see that areas where children are being abandoned and not represented in the district needs to change. In order to do that, we have to make sure that we are putting our students first.
So, trust is, can take a long time to build, and you can lose it in an instant. And I feel like at this point in time, particularly with our district, it's no surprise to anyone here, right, that from a communication perspective, the district as a whole has struggled. And I know that commissioners have been working hard with the administration to improve that. But we have to find ways to continue, even study what we're doing in some of our individual buildings. What are those best practices? How can we multiply those? And how can we amplify those across our district? I agree with my colleagues here that there are different channels that we need to tap into, but we can't live in a world going forward where families are blindsided or encounter decisions about their school, about their children's education in a forum. And perhaps even in some cases, as I've heard from folks as I've been walking and knocking on doors, that they learn about this in that meeting, and oftentimes feel like that decision is already made. That can't happen, and that's, to me, is a breakdown, creates a breakdown in trust. And so, you know, from my perspective, as a commissioner, it'll be super critical that we continue to be accessible, we be open, and we be honest, we be trustworthy going forward. So, we have a lot of work to do, but I'm also encouraged by global conversations like here. Only a few Mondays ago, the Racial Equity Institute conversation, which was incredible. And I heard some folks talking about that briefly in the last session. And frankly, those are the type of communications and conversations that we should be having as a district. So, it's complex. We have more work to do. But I'm encouraged that we're moving in the right direction, and we'll move in the right direction.
One thing that I think the district has done well is it tapes its action sessions. So if you want to view the action session you weren't able to attend, you can view that. The thing that's disheartening about that is it's really hard to find that link, right? If you want to watch it. So I think the district could do a better job of publicizing that. I think the district could also, or the Board itself, could do a good job of increasing community input by starting with its own rules. Right now, the rules provide that if you want to speak to the Board at its action session, you can talk to them for three minutes, as long as you sign up at least 24 hours before the meeting. And during those three minutes, they won't engage with you. They'll just listen to you, and then you sit down. And I've signed up for those three minutes. And it's disheartening to go up there and talk to the Board for three minutes with no interaction when you've seen other people talk to the Board during the meeting, and they've had interactions with the Board. If you want to provide written comment to the Board, the rules currently provide that you can provide those, but they will be distributed to the full Board as appropriate. And that's also not an invitation for community input. So I would change those rules to begin with, and I think that would go a long way to increasing community input.
And I would ask you to limit clapping, but just because we are on kind of a tight schedule with this forum, and we want to make sure that we cover a lot of ground with a lot of candidates. For parents, students, and teachers, one of the most important issues is ensuring schools are safe. At the same time, Indianapolis Public Schools has ongoing discipline disparities. Black students are more than twice as likely to be suspended than their white peers, according to federal data from 2015-16. How should the district balance the need for safety with the importance of keeping students in class? And what's the role of alternative discipline practices like restorative classes? If you could begin, Sherri.
Sure. First, I think we have to engage our students at a higher level. I think we have to make sure that what's happening in the classroom is for them. I think we have to change our practices and our strategies and make sure that we're using relevant tools that are for the 21st century. I think sometimes we work with students and think that they're not at a certain level when we're not engaging, we're engaging them at the lowest level. And I think that with the data that we're talking about, with the classroom management, is what we're, we have to do more professional development with teachers and support them in a different way. I think we have to work with parents. It has to be a community approach. It just can't be what's happening in the school. And we have to even work with our principals and our police officers that support the district. There are other resources that are available outside of the district. IPS is one that houses their own police department, their own 911 dispatch, and things like that. I think we have to reach out and combine our resources with surrounding districts.
Right now, our kids go to school, eight hours out of the day. And as a parent, I want to ensure that my child is safe. IPS employs IMPD, I believe, from I read from the article, and they have special help with that right now, which means they have extra security on hand. So if that's the case, then our kids should be safe at school, when we send them to school. So what I would do to kind of change the dynamic of safety is making a way for us to ensure that in the classroom, the teachers are being supported with resources in order to manage their classrooms effectively. Right now, our teachers don't have that kind of support, and that's why we don't have classroom management. So, in order to be safe, I feel like that we need to make sure that we are having security, our capital referenda that we want to pass, make sure that capital referenda is being put in all schools to ensure that the locks on the doors are being made in order to keep our kids safe. So, that's what I would do to change in safety for our kids.
So from a safety perspective, you know, long gone are the times of IPS, working alone to solve some of its safety matters and challenges. The safety of our kids is not an IPS responsibility. It's a city of Indianapolis responsibility. And so I agree that it requires collaboration with our district partners, IMPD, all of the, all of the resources, not just the law enforcement, but also the human service sector, to provide and help us, and help encourage and help guide our safety, from a safety perspective in our schools. I agree that definitely the capital referenda will increase safety as it pertains to locks on our doors. This is, should not be, we should not be in 2018 with this on our ballot. This should have already been done. Secure vestibules, ballers, and those things should be part of every school. A child cannot, cannot learn if they're, if they feel unsafe. And so, so that, to me, is fundamental, and again, is why I've said before, I don't think it's enough. As it pertains to the, to the classroom practices, children can't learn when they're not in school. And so for me personally, as a parent, it's frustrating to hear about, or even witness, my daughter not in school. She can't learn. And so I want to, I want to make sure that we're providing the resources, we're encouraging, we're supporting our school leaders to find creative ways, to partner with organizations inside and outside of our district and community, to find ways to respond to the ever-changing needs of our kids.
I'm going to address the part of your question about increased in-school suspensions and discipline of students of color. You might not know this, looking at me, but I am actually a diverse person. My mom is white and my dad's black. And so I've experienced firsthand what it feels like for people to judge you based on what you look like. So I think the first step in working on that problem is education for our teachers, right? And that's diversity education. Understanding that the lens through which people view diversity should be more than just what they look like. It's about talking to people, connecting with them, and understanding their differences and appreciating those. I think our teachers also need education on alternative methods of discipline. So, at my daughter's school, they actually have yoga and mindfulness. And believe me, when I first heard about that, I was like, really? How's that going to work? But I tell you, it works, because if you can teach a child to deal with their emotions and learn to calm themselves down, then that will help you in disciplining them. And if you meet them in a calm way and help them to work through that, that is always the best way to work through difficulties rather than just suspending them and kicking them out of the class.
It's a complex problem with lots of different factors to consider. One of the things that I think under Dr. Farabee's leadership is that there has been a focus on the reduction of expulsions and really taking a multi-tiered approach to discipline and some of the challenges that teachers face in the classroom. And so it's been different strategies. It's been increasing mental health services support in schools, ensuring that if those challenges in the classroom are related because the child has some sort of need there. So I've liked the varied strategy that the administration has taken, providing support and services to the children we serve. I think we need to do more work there, providing teacher support as well. We've instituted racial equity training, that I think someone talked about that earlier this evening. And I've seen lots of participation in that for teachers and staff. I've participated in that as well. It's amazing. You think that you understand some of the challenges that face our children, but you get educated through some pretty intense two-day training, and it opens up a whole new area of thinking. So I think that the district has taken different approaches, but there's still more work to do. And I'm pleased to see that there has been a reduction.
State test scores were recently released, and for the fourth year in a row, passing rates on both the math and English exams in Indianapolis Public Schools have declined. At three high schools, the number of students who passed were in the single digits. How seriously should the district take those test results? Should it reconsider its strategy? If you could start for us, Turiya.
Well, I most definitely think that we probably should redo our strategy on test scores. I feel like that there is two strategies that we can, approaches that we can take for that. We have to improve our struggling schools by making sure that we're allocating our resources directly to those classrooms to benefit those teachers. I feel like that we need to recruit and retain, and to provide professional development for our mid-level, our new and our experienced teachers. I think that would help our strategy on making sure that our kids are getting what they need in that classroom.
With regard to standardized testing, it's a complex situation. The state of Indiana, the State Board of Education are the ones, are the individuals and organizations that make the determination of what exam we provide to our children. I am not one that believes that a standardized test score for a particular child or school determines the health and the success of that particular school. It gets much more of a holistic approach. However, this is the reality that we're in right now. And so, you know, again, this goes back to, what do we do? How do we respond to that? And for me, it comes down to excellent teaching and excellent learning and instruction. And this goes back to one of the priorities that I have, which is, we must just not, we must, we can't just continue to pay our teachers at a cost of living adjustment. We need to double down, in some cases triple down, and do whatever we possibly can to ensure that our teachers are paid what they, for what they, paid what they deserve. And so, that's, that's the only way, I think, or one of the only ways that I think that we can truly increase our proficiency at the academic level in our classrooms for our kids, and change the trajectory.
While I agree that, you know, one test score isn't determinative of if it's, whether it's a good school or not, that's the reality that our schools are graded on. So right now, the A-through-F grade that our schools get is based on how the students do on the I-step. do on the I-step. And, you know, when I went to enroll Indy this year to see how many choices I had for my daughter for first grade, I had 74, right? And that's IPS schools and charters that are participating in enroll Indy. And to vet that many schools, I've got to look at the letter grade, right? Because I don't have time to go to 74 schools to look at all of them. So we've got to make sure that our students are doing well on the test so that the grades that the state is giving us are coming up. And how do we do that? Well, I think one of the reasons that our teachers are so low-paid in relation to the surrounding districts is we have a lot of young teachers in our district because they're, once they become more experienced teachers, they have better opportunities outside of our district. So we have to not only increase their pay, but also incentivize them to get further education when they're on the job, because right now we're not. And if we can do that, then I think that would help improve our test scores.
I think that similar, in agreement with the previous comments, that it's a measure that we can't ignore. It's a state standard, and it potentially could change again. But I think it's important that, and I see this happening in the school that my children attend, is that there are other measures of assessment. Specifically, when you think about getting the test results, usually we get them many months later, and so that teachers really can't even use that information to make changes in the classroom to specifically address where children are. So I know that having different assessments where you're measuring growth and getting that information in real time so that teachers can help students today versus looking at data six months later, I think is really critical. So whatever we can do at the district level to support that, I think that's really critical because we need to take advantage of having the children in the classroom and making changes immediately when we see that there's some lag in their learning.
In the 2013-14 school year, we had 51% of our students passing I-step, and we're down to 30%. So that's a huge decline. And 51% was not good, but we've made a lot of changes. I think we, again, have to evaluate those programs. We have about 14 schools that are new. We sometimes don't know until the third year if they're working. I think all of our students across the district deserve a basic traditional education with all those great strategies laid on top. But all schools need to have basic traditional content, curriculum, practices, strategies so that as our kids move around the district, because we have a high transient rate from school to school, we have to have those practices in place where they'll be successful. So if we're going to raise test scores, we have to take some of those schools that have great things happening. Example, our CFIs, they're using inquiry-based learning. It's a proven strategy. We need to thread that throughout some of our other schools on top of that traditional basic education that I received so that they can experience success and higher test scores.
And I did want to clarify that we have changed the I-step, and so that's why I focused on the four-year window, because that is how long we've been using the current version of I-step. So I think that larger drop might have included years before the transition.
So that was 2014 to 18. That's four years.
So it's 15, 16, 17, and 18 are, I believe, are the years that were the current exam. So I think 14 was the prior test.
But if we compare it to other school districts and even outside that are using traditional strategies and curriculum, their scores, even with the same kids, have kind of remained the same. They haven't dipped.
So a lot of, across the state, we saw a big dip when they made that transition between 2014 and 2015. So that's why I wanted to clarify that. Because that, the state really doesn't consider those two exams comparable either. We increased our standards, and we're expecting a decline in that period for passing rates. But let's go on to the next question. Putting aside test scores, the district still has lots of troubled schools. There are schools with high teacher turnover and discipline problems. What strategies should the district use to improve its most troubled schools?
Well, I support local control of our schools. And what I mean by that is, the state of Indiana, if we, if the way that, at least the state board or the Department of Education Interpretation says that four years of non-proficiency or low performance, your school can frankly be targeted and perhaps taken over by the state. That can't happen. And so it's critical that our schools maintain local control, and IPS operates their schools. And so I think we need to continue to find ways to intervene on our own locally and with regard to how we respond to year two, year one, frankly. Again, I can't stress how many times or how many discussions I've had with families that have expressed their concern about finding out about the troubled circumstances of their child's school. That conversation should be happening early, and our administration and our community should be wrapping around the particular school to find ways to continue to support that school so that it doesn't reach that year four period. And so I think it is, but also, I think, again, I'm encouraged by what we're doing at the district level from the perspective of autonomy and empowering our school leaders and teachers. And so, you know, I think we need to hone in and continue to drive those resources and that thought leadership into the classroom and into our school leaders' offices to make sure that we understand what are the power plays, what are the strengths of that school, and how do we amplify that? How do we grow those? And so it shouldn't be a top-down approach. I think the special sauce comes from each of the schools.
I think one way is replicating our successful programs, and other people on the panel have talked about this, replicating CFI, the Butler Lab. My daughter goes to a Montessori school. We're actually one of the few districts that has three public Montessori school choices. I mean, folks in the suburbs would love to send their kids to a public school, but they need to, or to a Montessori school that's public. But they need to feel comfortable with the district. I think we all agree teacher pay needs to be raised. And one thing I'll add to that conversation, which not a lot of people understand or know, is that if we raise teacher pay for teachers in IPS through the collective bargain agreement, that will affect teachers that are IPS teachers. We have 20 innovation schools in the district, right? And so if the operations referendum is passed and that money comes to the district, more money can go to an innovation school to the principal, but the principal decides if it raises teacher pay or not. So innovation teachers might not even get raises because of the model the district has now gone through. So I would pump the brakes on innovation because we're not really helping our kids if we're not helping their teachers.
Well, I support the district's current strategy, and there's many things that the district is doing and intends to do to support struggling schools. Right, you know, I'm in support of autonomy, and I think that providing principals, the authority, the ability with their budgets, with student-based allocation to make decisions about what they think is best for that school to serve specifically the students that they're serving, I think is really critical. There's also an approach that the district takes to evaluate how schools are doing in terms of growth and providing additional supports to those schools so that they can move along and improve. And there's also the approach of the last resort if needed. And I think with family and community engagement, whether a school should be restarted, because as my colleague Evan said, it's important that we maintain control of our schools. So when I think about the approach the district has taken and plans to take, I think it's a solid plan. Also, with the operating referendum, obviously, it's important that that passes so that we can increase teacher pay, so that we can attract and retain and stop the attrition rate.
I think, again, we have to make sure at the district level that we have equity across our schools. And even when we look at the Montessori schools or the CFIs and look at their location, School 27, CFI is not performing at the level of the others. School 56, when you look at their data, is not like School 91 or the other Montessori schools. So we have to make sure that as our kids move around, that they have the same resources, tools, opportunities, and experiences. So I think the problem's really deep, and I think autonomy's great, but we still have to manage our schools so that staff have same opportunities, same professional development opportunities, our students, our parents, our communities. Again, we have a high population of students that move from school to school, and we have to take care of all those students. And I have to make sure that when they're here, they're getting the same opportunities as here. And even though we have the whole enroll Indiana, and that's a whole nother conversation, that we have to make sure that that's fair for our students and how they're able to choose schools, and that it's not just a neighborhood school, it's a school that they might have an option to go across or, there's just, there's so much. So equity, I think, is really important.
What I think that we need to do is we need to recruit educators that look like our students. I believe that they need role models. And in order to do this, we need to make sure we're funding, again, the classroom. And if we're funding the classroom, we're doing that effectively by making sure that every neighborhood has a school that has a quality education. Some of our kids don't have access to a high-quality education, and this is what the issue is. That's why the school is struggling throughout the district. We're creating school deserts in certain locations because we're making sure these things are, these programs are being replicated in certain zip codes and excluding other zip codes. And this is unfair to our kids.
Indianapolis Public Schools recently closed three of its high schools and adopted an all-choice model where students choose a school based on their interests. Do you support the all-choice academy model? How would you like to see it change or develop? And I think we're starting with you now, Michelle.
All right. I think choice is a great thing, as long as all of your choices are good choices. And I have concerns about this push to require our high school students to pick their career in ninth grade. I mentored a student that went to Crispus Attics for four years, and she had no interest in the medical field, but she didn't want to go to her neighborhood school because it wasn't good. So she went to Crispus Attics. And she went to IU, did a great job. Now she's working in Milwaukee in fashion because she majored in business. And I wonder how much more she could have achieved in high school if she didn't have to go to Crispus Attics and waste those years learning about the medical field when that wasn't her area of interest. So I think choice is fine, but we need to make sure that we're allowing our students to explore areas that they're interested in and not making them pick a career in ninth grade.
Yes, I support the all-choice model. I think that it's important that we continue to focus our attention and our resources, that we strengthen the college and career pathways. Indianapolis Public Schools now offers a whole variety of opportunity that not only includes areas in, you know, in health and science and math and STEM-type programs, but also there is classical liberal arts, high school opportunities for them too. So I think that providing those choices and for us to continue to strengthen, and I agree with you, Michelle, and ensuring that all those choices are solid choices, that we continue to invest in those, are really critical. There's quite a bit of research that shows that students who select a pathway, that they can, you know, gain your typical general ed, high school skills, but they also have an opportunity potentially to be certified in an area to be able to gain college credit. I think those are all positives for our children.
I think our students need the options. I think that, I'm all over the map with that in some ways. I think that we have to know what our future, what the future is for our students. Not all our kids are going to college. Some of our kids have interest in repairing automobiles, plumbers, being electricians and all those different careers and going to the military. So I think we have to, since we're down to the four high schools, we have to make sure that the offerings at those schools are broad enough for those students. And if, and I'm not quite sure, we still need, whenever they get that general diploma or the Core 40 diploma, that we have opportunities for them to just focus on a solid education where they get their English, math, science, social studies, just the basics. So I think we have to kind of evaluate, since we're down to the four high schools, what our offerings are and to make sure that those offerings will lead to their success, whatever their choice may be.
Well, I am wondering why our children have to have a choice at all. Why aren't these programs replicated throughout the entire district in our neighborhood schools? So then our kids don't have to make the choice of whether or not to go across town, to go to a program that is of their choice, or if they can get a CNA license because they aspire to be a doctor. I'd rather them do that, or rather than them have that career pathway and not be flipping burgers at a restaurant instead of earning $15 an hour with their CNA license. My sister is, she didn't like school. She still doesn't like school. And she inspires to go to the National Guard. This is a better option for her. I'd rather her be doing something rather than being on the corner of the street and not applying herself. So we got to make sure that our kids are being pushed into programs that work for them, but make sure these programs are, have our access to these programs all over the district. If not, then we're doing them a disservice.
So I think it's important to state here that, again, the Department of Education, the state board of education, and our legislatures determine the career, the pathway model for our high schools, so career, college, or service. That decision was made, and as a district, we've responded to that. I support choices and choices for our students in high school, as long as they're great choices, and access is key. And so I have some concerns about schools in particular quadrants of town that may be a focus, that have more of a college track focus. I personally think that all of our high schools should have a balanced approach, a balanced approach, and should have offerings for all students. Frankly, because of your geographic location, that should not determine whether or not you have access to a college track or a service track. I think all the options should be available and bear out. So, you know, I think we need to continue to flush that out and over time. And if we feel like it isn't working, that's when we need to go down to the state house and have a conversation with those that represent us.
Over the last three years, Indianapolis Public Schools has embraced innovation schools, which are run in partnership with charter or nonprofit operators. Innovation is a strategy for restarting failing schools, for giving extra freedom to principals, and increasing the district's enrollment by adding charter schools to the network. What are your views on innovation schools? Do you think the district should change its approach? And if you could start for us, Dorian.
I see innovation schools as one option to consider when we are looking at what's the best fit for a neighborhood in terms of the academic program and what the community and the parents of that community believe is the fit. And sometimes innovation school option is the best option. So I see charter schools and innovation schools as part of our educational landscape, part of our toolbox, if you will, to look at what's the best option for our children in a specific neighborhood.
I believe in innovative ideas that are proven. And so for me, that means innovation schools that are proven. I don't think we should take a chance with our students. I think we should kind of pause on the innovation schools and reevaluate where we are and how we are, that whole approval process and how those schools are, how we're running those schools. So their data is not very positive, and I struggle with that because sometimes we don't know, because we're not in the game until three years out, and they fail and they close. So I really struggle with that because that means I've played with the lives of those students, 500, 600, 800, for three years, and they're failing, and it's time for them to go on, and where do they go? So I think we should stop the innovation schools, reevaluate the program, tweak it, and if it's something that we're going to move forward with, that we develop a successful process to open those, evaluate, and keep them up to a certain standard.
Well, one out of five children in IPS attend Innovation School Network. I have a unique position right here on this panel because all three of my kids go to Innovation Network schools. So I can speak from my personal experience. I have seen the challenges that we have been facing just this year alone. I've seen teachers leave in the middle of the year. I've seen principals be replaced in the beginning of a school year without prior notice to our parents, our communities. I have seen teachers being stripped from teachers' unions and the capability of being in those teacher unions and being represented in it. I've seen that the program is being only measured on growth alone for the first three years. I think we need to stop replicating this program until we have better research on what's really going on. We need to make sure that our kids are hitting every last one of these benchmarks, for my children and for your children. children and for your children, because all these children should have academic success.
My daughter attends CFI 70. And I can tell you, twenty-five years ago, seventy, or CFI began in the, in the hip pocket of another school in the district, twenty-five years ago. And today, we can fast forward to know that thousands of students have been served and well-served by that phenomenal model. I believe it took risk-taking, innovation, and a willingness to, 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 I would say, go against the current, because I'm sure there were naysayers that thought that this was not where we should be investing our resources, our time, talent, and treasure, et cetera. And so I see innovation schools frankly as the next generation of the district willing to take risks, to do what it takes to serve our students. I also want to restate, though, that if we clarify, four years, four years is what it takes for a school to under, to be considered under proficient or underperforming before it can be taken over by the state of Indiana. Innovation schools are not the panacea, but innovation schools represent one of those options that the district has and other districts have, I believe, to respond to and to ensure that our schools stay locally controlled.
I just respectfully don't think comparing CFI schools to innovation schools is a fair comparison. That's apples to oranges. Because the CFIs, when those schools were innovating, didn't enter into an agreement with the district that pulled all of their teachers outside of the collective bargaining agreement and forced all the teachers to leave the school. And that kind of disruption has a huge impact on our students. You know, a lot of the information you hear about innovation schools is that they're turning these, these schools around in one year, right? Cold Spring's a good example where one of Tereya's kids goes, and that school went from an F to an A in one year. Well, innovation schools in their first three years are only evaluated on growth, not growth and performance. And traditional public IPS schools are rated on both. And so if you actually look at the, the statistics, there were some improvements, but not so sufficient to justify an A, an F to an A grade. So I think we need to pump the brakes on these innovation schools. We're doing a pilot to figure out if our high school students should take the Indigo Bus, but we didn't even pilot the innovation schools. So let's make sure they're affected before we keep going down this path at this pace we're going.
If you win a seat on the board, what is your long-term vision for the district? What would it look like in five or ten years down the line? If you could start, Sheri.
Sure. For every student to be successful, for there to be equity across the district where a family could move in anywhere within IPS, and that school that their child will attend will be solid, and they'll graduate, be successful, that our middle and high schools will be the same, that our budget is sound, that we're financially sound five years, ten years out, that our teachers are paid at a higher rate and not just a two percent, that we need the sixteen percent because we're at forty-eight thousand average, and they need to be today at fifty-eight thousand. So I think long-term, we need to make sure that, that equity is with our students, our teachers, and then our other, we have classified staff that are underpaid also. So we need to look all the way through the district to make sure that we're taking care of everyone, and they're all successful.
IPS has thirty-one thousand students, about eighty-eight schools in total. It is the largest school district in the state. So I would like to see a huge push towards making sure our neighborhood schools have quality education. I would like to see that our staff is diverse in color. Not only are our children can see the role models that they can see and aspire to be. I would like to see higher compensation for our teachers for the work they do every day. These are a few changes that I would like to see made in the next five years for IPS.
I would say that, you know, again, this is, for me, the priority is that all children receive the very, have, receive the very best opportunities and have access to the very best schools regardless of where they live or what they look like. And that's fundamental, and that's something that, that I won't rest until we have that. Frankly, though, one of the challenges that we have right now, we have a storm coming with regard to our financial position right now. The referendum, again, does not solve all of our troubles. We need to continue to find ways to optimize our expenses. We have to stabilize our district, and not just in a two-year, three-year, four-year, but a long-term plan. Whether anyone here continues to serve or serves for the first time, this has to be a plan that's long-term thinking, not just on the operating side, but on the capital side. We have to stabilize and sustain our district financially long-term. Otherwise, we'll continue to see volatility with regard to enrollment. We'll start to see things start to unravel, continuing to, or we'll see things continue to unravel, and we can't let that happen for our, for our children, our teachers, and our community here in Indianapolis.
I'd like to see IPS be a school district that people are trying to get into, and it's hard to get into because it's so sought after. When I tell my colleagues that work downtown that I send my daughter to IPS, they're surprised. And that's too bad. I mean, it shouldn't be a surprise. I didn't want to send my child to school in the suburbs because I wanted her to have not only a good education, but also an education surrounded by diverse students racially and socio-economically. And that's something the suburbs can't offer right now. And so IPS needs to lift up the things that it's doing really well, do a better job of promoting its successes, not just CFI and Montessori and Butler Lab, but the good things that are going on in our neighborhood schools. And if we can turn that around and, you know, make it a district that not only our students want to attend, but our teachers are trying to get into, which right now, I don't know that it's the best place to work if you're a teacher. And if we can make it a place where our teachers want to get a job there and are having a hard time getting a job because everybody wants to work there, then wow, we could really turn around IPS.
What I would envision in five to ten years is that IPS is a model urban district, that we are on a stable financial path with the support of increased federal and state and local funding, because that's just not going to happen without that. So I'm, I'm dreaming big here. And that we continue to operate the district efficiently so that more dollars that we get go directly to the classroom, that we attract and retain and pay competitively our teachers and our school leaders and our administration, so that this becomes a place that is a magnet that people want to work for, and that every neighborhood has a quality school.
What are your views on Superintendent Farabee's administration? Would you support keeping him in the district? Tereya?
Well, Dr. Farabee, in my opinion, is doing what he's hired to do. And he's being compensated for doing so. I feel like that although he's doing his job, I feel like that he's left out the views of many stakeholders, like myself, parents and teachers. I would like to see more of a diverse, authentic engagement when it comes to relating to the community directly from Dr. Farabee.
I, I would say that Dr. Farabee has been effective, and I'll explain that. I think Dr. Farabee has a, has a strong team around him, supporting him. What I would tell you is, is that we have troubles ahead, and we have a long road ahead as well, right? There's a lot to be done. And it's critical that our school board of commissioners, that we wrap around not only the superintendent, but the team, our students and teachers and staff across the board. We wrap around a team that can support him, can support our administrators, and support our children, most importantly. And so that, that, for me, is, is mission critical, particularly with some of these financial challenges that we have coming our way with regard to the four-year clock that we have from the state of Indiana. We need to make sure we have a team around that can support him.
I'm not a big fan of some of the initiatives that Dr. Farabee and the board are pursuing right now, but I haven't worked with him. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you if I'd hire him or fire him without having worked with him. Looking at the rules, and I'm an attorney, so I like to look at the rules, I know that the board is responsible for reviewing Dr. Farabee on an annual basis, and they currently do it in executive session. And I think that is a real missed opportunity for community input. So I would change that, so that way the community would have some input into his review. And I think if they did that, I'd probably know more about Dr. Farabee right now than I do because I'm not on the board, so I don't have the amount of interaction that the board has with him. So I think I would change that rule, and then after working with him, hopefully I'll be on the board after the election, and then I'll be able to give a better answer in a year or two.
When I think of, of Dr. Farabee's performance, I think about miserable results. And when you think about the graduation rate being ten years ago, something like forty-seven percent, and it's currently eighty-three percent, when, during a very difficult financial situation the last two, three years with a structural deficit, looking at opportunities for cost-cutting measures and disposing of underutilized facilities and turning that, those dollars into increased annual pay to teachers, not enough, but something. They had a freeze for five years. So the last three years, it's been about eight point eight million dollars. Looking at the fact that popular and successful programs have been replicated, Butler Lab and Montessori and CFI. So I can go on, on a few other things, but overall, when I think about those results, I'm, I'm pleased with his performance. I'd like to see some increased community, broad community engagement and opportunities for that throughout, throughout the year. I think that's really critical, that we continue, like I said earlier in the previous question, continue the conversation with the broad community, not only when there's big issues on, on the table like referendos and, and high school closures.
That's hard. I'm concerned. I'm concerned because we've showed no improvement over the years. Sure, our successful schools are successful, but they were successful before he came. I'm concerned about the people that he has surrounded himself with. It used to be that we had educators that had gone through and gotten their license and worked up to that level and took their expertise and, and shared that and mentored to other leaders, and we don't have that anymore. It's more of a business model. And if it's a business model, and we are now a Fortune 500 company, which we're not, but that's how we seem to be, are behaving, that what do we do at Fortune 500 companies? And I hate to say that, but, because if we're not turning profit, that means our students are not being successful. Normally, we get rid of the leader. And I'm not saying that, I'm saying that if we're going to follow that model or choose that model, then we need to follow it one hundred percent, and we need to make sure that our top level are successful. They're here for our students, and they're here for the long haul, and they're not searching around for, for what's out there for them. They're about our kids and about our community.
All right. I'm, I'm going to move on to a few questions from the audience. What specifically will you do to address the lack of diversity in IPS magnet schools such as CFI 84? How will you ensure equitable access to sought-after magnet programs? Where are we starting? I've lost track. Evan, thank you.
Yeah, so my daughter attends CFI 70. And I will tell you that, that's something that I pay incredible attention to, particularly one of the decisions that my wife and I made was we wanted to send our school to a kid that, or to send our daughter to a school that, where there are children that look like her and don't look like her. And our school has made progress. It has a lot of work to do. I can tell you that there's much more diversity in kindergarten than, than there has been over the last three years that we've been in that school. But again, there's a mountain to climb and much more work to do. Globally, though, I think that, you know, for me, access is the key, and we need to continue to study, what is it that we're doing? What, what, what are we bearing out? What are we learning from this increased diversity that we're seeing in our kindergarten classroom? Is that enroll Indy? I don't know. Is that, is that awareness? Is that promotion? What are those channels? How do we tap into that and continue to grow? But I would say as a district as a whole, again, back to, back to the whole issue of socioeconomic circumstance and geographic location, you shouldn't have to hop in a bus and ride for an hour, hour and a half to get to a great school on the opposite side of town. I truly believe that our schools should be in all quadrants of our town. I mean, one of the special things about what CFI has done is they've, frankly, I would say, built communities around these schools, which, I'm sorry, but, you know, those who are not in favor of the capital and the operating referendum, I'm concerned because your property tax, your property values are, I believe, directly attributed to those phenomenal schools in those neighborhoods. And so I want to see schools like CFI, like Montessori, like Lab, et cetera, in other quadrants of our town as well. I believe that great schools transform neighborhoods as well.
So the first thing that they've done to try to increase diversity at 84 recently was they changed the boundary of preference right from one mile to half a mile, thinking that that might improve diversity. That did not work. I have a friend who has a child in kindergarten at CFI 84, and there is one diverse student in their class, and that is not enough, obviously. And so I think what they need to do is figure out how to get people who are not as connected to understand the way to enroll in these schools. I mean, right now, the last year, there were three lotteries, three drawings, to get into these sought-after schools. This year, they're only going to have two, right? And there are some people that don't know anything about it. I will tell you, when I was trying to get my daughter enrolled into IPS, I actually drove down to the main office to, to figure out how to get her enrolled, and when I got there, they said that the enrollment office was closed. It was four o'clock in the afternoon. I said, "Well, how would I know that?" "Oh, there's a sign on the door." I mean, that's not the way that you communicate with your parents. So we need to make sure that we're communicating with all areas of our community to make sure that they can understand and effectively navigate the enrollment process so that we can increase diversity.
I think we need to replicate these successful programs in other parts of the city that we haven't yet, as, as simple as that, but not, not easy to immediately do. But that's what I think needs to happen. We need to provide opportunity to other neighborhoods in the district with schools like CFI and Butler and Montessori. You know, enroll Indy has been successfully increasing. I think the, I think there's about a thousand or so increased applicants to, to the magnet programs. I think that's positive, and I, I hope that their work here in the fall will increase those numbers because it's important to also educate and inform parents that that's a choice. And that's one of the things that we found out from a report that oftentimes, parents don't recognize as, as a choice. But I think the key thing is to expand these programs in other areas.
So the magnet schools are all about the pillars of magnet, and the bank, built on the pillars of the magnet schools. And if those schools are still magnet schools, then their diversity would reflect the community, the IPS community. So really, they're not magnet schools anymore because of the neighborhood boundaries and the lotteries that we have. That was a wink. Because you have to make sure that there's one lottery, and there's one true honest lottery. So I think we should review the policy around enrollment and how those boundaries are designed. We have to, again, the whole equity thing across all schools, and we just have to make sure it's, it's a fair process for all students and that the, that it reflects the community and that not the community of the neighborhood. So that, it's, it's, that's a really bad thing for our children, because our children need the diversity of the social, economic, race, conversation, relation. It's, you know, you're building this culture and climate in the school. Yeah, we need to change that.
I agree with what you said, Sheri. I do. I absolutely agree, agree with having diversity in our schools. And I'll tell you a little story, and I'll tell you why. My child is excited every day when she gets up to go to school for one reason and one reason alone, Miss Tiffany. Miss Tiffany's there, and Miss Tiffany looks like her, has nice, thick, kinky hair. And that makes her excited about going to school, and it makes me excited as a parent. I think one way in order to spread diversity throughout our schools is by making sure we have these high-quality programs located in our neighborhood schools. Another way in doing this would be not compromising the integrity of these programs, because if we're replicating these programs effectively, then these programs will be available for all of our children. So this is what I think we should do about diversity. We need to make sure that we are employing educators that look like our, our, our kids and that can relate to our kids, to help mentor our kids. So then we don't have a disenrollment of, of kids in IPS, because they said they, they have a disen, they have high graduation rate, but yet we have a low disenrollment in IPS right now, so the two can't go hand in hand.
How can the board encourage schools to support students, students who are impacted by the juvenile justice system? And what can the board do to help students who are impacted by gun violence in the city and help create schools that are healing spaces for students and staff? Michelle?
Can you repeat? I'm so sorry. The first part, it was hard. Here, I'm sorry, Michelle.
So the first part was specifically how the board can encourage schools to support students who are impacted by the juvenile justice system. And the second question was how the, the board can work to create schools that are healing places for students.
places for students and staff impacted by gun violence.
Sure. I think the answer to me for both is that we can't assume that the folks that are running our schools, the administrators, the teachers, know everything, right? They need the input, they need the assistance of the community, right? So I think if you bring the community into the schools and ask them, "What do you need for support?" And then that should flow up through the schools and up to the administration. We make sure that each school and each community has what they need to make sure that all students are served. I think that's the way to answer that question. Because I think the way to be the best leader isn't to assume that you're the smartest person in the room. I think the smartest person in the room looks in the room and asks for people to give them their input, because if we all work together, then we can reach the best conclusions.
I think we need to continue to provide the social, emotional supports that our children need. We've really done, I think, a good job of tackling food insecurity. Many of you've learned that we offer breakfast and lunch and we offer a fruit and vegetable snack, because what we, you know, learned, I should say, Dr. Farabee learned during his listening tours, that was a real challenge. Well, there are other challenges facing our children too when they walk in the door. We have addressed potentially not being hungry, being able to be prepared to learn, but children are sometimes bringing other issues that are in the social, emotional trauma. So I think it's really important that the school leaders and the teachers, of course, stay connected to the families, that they understand that they're neighborhoods that they're serving, so that we can provide community and all the other support wraparound services to be able to address the unique needs of all children.
And I agree with that. I think we have to build bridges into the community and I think our resources and services need to be for the students, but also the families. Because if we don't work with the parents at a different level and communicate and educate and support, then it's hard to do something for their child. So I think that, I think we have to build better relationships and I think we have to be better, not just financial and all those other different types of stewards, but a better steward of relationships. And that we have to look for different types of partnerships that can provide that level of support where they can come in and mentor. You know, there's programs that they bring dogs into the buildings for students that are challenged with reading. So I think we have to hop outside the box. You know, our world is different and yes, violence is real, but I think we also have to, I keep going back to equity, because if we provide solid opportunities for all our kids, then hopefully we will truly increase the graduation rate. We won't have that increase in our dropout rate and we can help our crime rate, because we have to look at all this long-term, because all these decisions we're making now are going to have some kind of impact on our children and on our future and our communities long-term.
I also agree with what you said, Sheri. I think that we need to look at our dropout rate and see that how are we retaining students and how are we engaging with our students in order for them to be effective in their education? Thus also, I can't stress enough how we need to try to gain educators or get educators that can relate to the community, that it needs to be served, the most vulnerable students. I need, we need to see more chaplains being partnershiped with that work in the juvenile system right now, that can help our kids relate to the stories that are being told and behind those walls, to keep our kids out of those systems. I think it's important for us to have those partnerships. So I, that's what I would do.
So I would say that this is, this is not just an Indianapolis problem, this is a national problem that we have. And as a commissioner, we need to, we need to start looking up in the clouds and start moving around and what jurisdictions, what states, what cities, what are they doing and what is working successfully? And from my experience and my knowledge of, limited that might be as pertains to a particular subject, other than working for the Department of Correction for a short period of time, I'd say, we had to get out of our own way and go learn from other jurisdictions, whether it be the Criminal Justice Institute, other enterprises here locally, they study, they embark on research as it pertains to understanding what's happening in other parts of the country. And so what are the best practices? What are the exercises that are happening that are working, particularly in urban centers like Indianapolis around the country? And we need to find those and we need to replicate those. But I think as we think about the child as a whole, the child is a person and so the needs of our children aren't just academic, aren't just financial, aren't, this is a whole person that requires support. And so I'm encouraged by partnerships, my colleague mentioned, particularly from ministry. I mean, I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing at 43 with regard to a few of our ministry partners. I think this is an opportunity to expand this to the next level. When I think about a human, I think about a person and a child, particularly my daughter, it's mind, body, and spirit. And so how are we serving that child? And I think it starts with health. I think it starts with ministry and spiritual, and I think it also starts on the academic side. So we need to figure out a way to marry those together and learn from our colleagues around the country who are in the same, dealing with the same circumstances that we are.
All right. So we are out of time, folks. If you could just end with a final closing statement, let's start with Doreen.
Sure. A great school system makes for a great neighborhood and a child has an opportunity to succeed when those two things are happening in his or her life. I'm interested in continuing to serve on the board because I think we're on the path, although it's been very challenging. We're on a path to ensure that every neighborhood has a quality school and we're on a path with the referendum passing, both operating in capital, to be able to increase compensation so we can develop a competitive compensation program. And we need to continue to create, build, build community, build a broad community of partners so that together, as a broad community, we can contribute to improving our school system.
I want to be your person. I want to be the one that looks out for our students, for our community. I want to be that voice. I want to use my years of experience to relate at the superintendent level, the teacher level, the principal level, the parents, the partnerships. I want to help the teachers long-term have fair and competitive pay and for the students to be able to have those opportunities and experiences of their peers and make sure that there is equity in education. I want to help the district long-term build their finances and to find those partners that can help them become staple. I want to be the support and just long-term be that support for the students and be that voice that will speak up and will ask questions and will challenge and will stay the course to make a difference.
If I'm elected, I will be willing to ask the hard questions. I want to hold our board and our superintendent accountable. I would like to be transparent with our community with what's going on and how the funds are being spent and allocated. I also want to advocate for our community because that's what we need. We need avocation. We need our voices to be heard throughout the entire district to ensure that all of our children have access to a quality education.
So I'm a dad. That's how I started. I have a second grader and I have a four-year-old coming up right behind her. And this work is a calling. There's no doubt about it. It's hard work. Just through this process, I think we can all agree that just to get to this table right now, to have this discussion with all of our visitors here, it's been a lot of hard work. But I can tell you that it's good work. This is God's work as it pertains to our children. And so what I can tell you is, is that the fire that burns, the DNA that I come from, frankly, is a family of educators. I had a grandfather that served as the first African-American Board of Commissioners and I had a great uncle that was the first principal at Crispus Attucks High School. And what I'll tell you is, is that folks like these guys taught me about what fairness, justice, equity, and what hard work looks like. And so this isn't a transactional opportunity for me to go serve and work for four years. This is about who I am and where I come from. And so what I can commit to you is someone who will be trustworthy, honest, open, available, and that will work their tail off for our children. Thank you.
So there are seven seats on the IPS board and three of them are up for election. This is a really important year with the at-large position, District Five, and then my district, District Three. I'm a business litigator and a person with a record of service to communities. So I have legal experience, financial experience, and perspective. I, right now, am a very successful person and I could send my daughter anywhere. I chose IPS because it was the right choice for me, it was the right choice for her to get a quality, diverse education. And so if you're looking for someone that has not only the skills, but the right perspective, then I think I'm your candidate.
Thank you all for joining us and thank you all for coming to this event. I'd also like to thank our partners tonight, WFYI, the Indianapolis Library, and The Recorder. A video of this will be available, so if you missed any moments and you want to catch up, you will be able to get that online. Yes.
Yeah. See you around.
Thank you.
21 days or so.